Next item then.
Special reports, first day of schools, Dr. Jill Chalkel, Dr. Yosef Massam, Ms. Shannon Peterson, and Mr. David Mustenan.
Second best day of the school calendar after graduation, first day back at school.
Okay, well, there are a number of elements that are certainly common for our little ones, our four-year-olds to preschool, all the way on up to our high school students. So first off, just like adults, our students need lots of rest, lots of sleep. And we always recommend to parents who may be enjoying some of these really nice, late, bright nights, that perhaps getting in the bedtime routines a little bit early, especially when students are younger, although it's still very important for our teenagers, as early as possible, just as a way to kind of transition and ensure that everybody's kind of up and ready early on. Positive discussions about, you know, what a great year it's going to be, you know, some positive affirmations, things to look forward to, to kind of set the tone from the parents also is very helpful. Checking the school websites, principal blogs, teacher blogs, all of the social media that our schools have have been available certainly to families all summer. And so we encourage families, if they haven't signed up for some of the things, because some of the things they have to go and actually sign up for to get emails straight to their either email or phone, and so there's lots of valuable information, schedules and such attached to that. There are curriculum nights in September. The dates are also again linked on the website, not only at their individual schools, but the schedule for the whole district. So planning to attend the back-to-school night in September is a source of great information, not only for the parents, but certainly for students. Parents getting kind of ready for homework, reading at home, writing, whatever students may be doing, providing a quiet place that is away from technology, TV, and screens is helpful so that students can concentrate. Volunteering at school or simply staying in touch, depending upon what the parent's schedule is. We have many working parents, and it is very difficult for some of them to volunteer at school regularly. And although the students in particularly enjoy that, well, most of them at all ages, the idea that some parents are not available, it's important to stay in touch, stay connected. And with email, text, remind apps and so forth, there are lots of ways to stay in touch. And then also the PTA, our parent-teacher associations, are crucial supports of every one of our schools. And so we would like all of our parents to be involved with all of our PTA activities. They're very important to connect not only the teaching and learning, but all of the activities that our students engage in with families. So at the elementary level, we get a little bit more of the same, parents reading with kids every night, talking about, you know, the exciting things that have happened that day, ensuring that once the class lists are published, that students know what teacher they're going to have. Our schools are working to get that information out earlier, and administrators kind of balance the, don't publish the list too soon, because things can happen over summer with families and transitions, and you want to give out a wrong name and then have to change that later, because that is certainly distressing. But the idea that parents are able to let kids know so that they can discuss the teacher by name is sometimes an important way for the kids to anticipate. Finishing, the summer reading assignments, many of our schools have offered some I-Learn courses where students can engage in not only reading books, doing activities, but also writing book recommendations for their friends, accessing Myon or MobyBack, some of the technology, our e-readers that are available to students and have been all summer, would be a way to limit that summer learning loss and kind of get back in the routine. Visiting the school, most of our new kindergarteners, if they've come to the kindergarten roundup with their parents, have already visited the school, but the roundups are done in spring. And so the idea that particularly our youngest students often need to actually see the school and know where they're going, it is sometimes very reassuring for parents, because the separation is not only sometimes challenging for students, it's certainly challenging for parents. And, you know, we just, you know, say to the parents, now, we don't want your child crying, so you can't cry either. So the idea that it is positive and uplifting is all a part of that back-to-school routine.
All right, well, middle school, it's really important to understand how much growth a child goes through during the middle school years. It does, it compares to birth to two. A lot is going on, they're changing physically, they're changing emotionally, and parents really need to understand that. I recommend that they attend scheduled pickup day, and if you have a student who's transitioning from elementary to middle school, that walk around, help them get the lay of the land and know where their classes are. Also, the parents have to assist their child in understanding that they are going from, especially if they're going from fifth grade to sixth grade, they're going from having maybe two teachers to six or seven, depending on whether they're taking band in phys ed or just phys ed and elective. So the more that you can help your child understand how to balance the personalities of different teachers and the expectations of different courses will help them as well. Definitely subscribe to teachers' teacher blogs, parents have more to juggle as well as their students, and if they're proactive, and most of our teachers now publish on the blogs weekly, many in the middle school will publish daily and put homework assignments up there, so that sometimes middle school students forget their homework, and sometimes you can access it on the blog. I also recommend that they check Parent Connect and check it often. The more proactive you are, the easier it is to work with the school to help your child catch up or just stay on top of things. All of our middle schools provide planners for the students, and this is the time when we can teach them how to use them and use them correctly. So if parents at home support the use of the planner and check the planner each day, you know, if you ask a child, what did you learn in school today, or what did you do in school today, often you will hear nothing. So use that planner, use the blog, use Parent Connect to springboard those conversations. Middle school's also a time where friends change. You go from fifth grade to sixth grade, you're in a small elementary, going to a larger middle school, and friendships that they've had for the first five grade levels sometimes change, so I recommend that parents make sure that they get to know their students or their child's friends and the parents of their child's friends. And it's a challenge now, because our kids all have cell phones. I mean, I don't know about you, but when someone called, for me, that phone was attached to the wall, and they could have gotten my mom or my brother. And now with kids having cell phones, it's often, we don't get to talk to our children's friends. So middle school years especially, get to know your child's friends, get to know the parents of your child's friends, because they're going to spend a lot of time. And then middle school also tends to be the time where we give our kids more technology, and with that, it's a great tool, but we also have to put boundaries and parameters on it. When I was Principal O'Brien, I always told the parents to take those, anything that connects to Wi-Fi at nine o'clock at night and put it in one spot so that the student didn't have it all night long, because they will actually answer texts all night long. So to keep control and to monitor technology and the use of technology, because our students are savvy, and this is a time when they want a lot of freedom but need a lot of boundaries.
Thank you, Jill. So basically, everything that Jill and Shannon stated, plus a little bit more for high school. So with high school, you know, the kids are going to start getting more involved in extracurricular activities, they're going to start dabbling into different things that they may want to do post-secondary education. These extracurricular activities are not just athletics. I mean, within our school district, we have so many different performing arts, so many different scholastic opportunities, robotics, engineering, STEM, so on and so forth. So get to know what's happening in your child's school and what's available, and have conversations with the children about what do you want to do? What are your goals post-secondary? Have those conversations about college, university, you know, and those are conversations that you should be having from kindergarten on up. But students start, and you know, when they come into ninth grade, they're really going to be, you know, middle school was a transition, ninth grade is also a major transition. So therefore, when you have those conversations with them, continuously have those conversations of what are your future goals? And by getting to know your child's counselor, getting to know their teachers, getting to know the individuals in the school, you can reach out to them to see, well, what are some avenues that you have for the children so that you can have those discussions with them? All the schools offer those avenues to the students, but I think we all understand teenagers, like Shannon mentioned, when you ask them, what did you do when you come home, and they say nothing. A lot of times you'll ask the kids, well, what are some opportunities at the school? Nothing. So by us going out and having those conversations, it really helps that. And also to continue emphasizing that the social connections are very important for the children, and then those social connections coming through a lot of the clubs and organizations that are available in the high schools. Talk about changing dynamics of students and friendships in middle school. Those dynamics will continue to change in high school, especially when they get involved in different social organizations and/or clubs, plus community service. It'll give them a different view and an outreach to the environment that they have around them. And what's good about that, too, is for within the city, they start to see the different avenues, because many times students, you know, they go to the elementary school, middle school, but when they get into high school, they start reaching out to different areas of the city, and they get to learn more about their own community. To reiterate, it's very important to maintain contact with the children's counselors, their teachers, the administrators, through blogs, face-to-face conversations, you know, email, but the face-to-face conversations are important. I used to love it as a high school principal, seeing parents of high school students coming in and surprising their kids. It was a great thing, you know? Two thousand kids walking through the hallway, and you always knew which kid's mom or dad was there. It was that, it just brightened up their face. So going to the school really makes a difference. Follow-up on dual enrollment coursework. I mentioned this purposely, because too often when our students go into dual enrollment courses, you know, they're college students. Well, we still, as parents, we still have to follow up with our children and what they're doing in those dual enrollment course, that coursework, the same way we do with what they're doing during the day in their comprehensive high school. So that's a very important piece as well. Supporting and get them to aspire to take higher-level courses, rigorous courses, AP, honors, go into those courses that are non-traditional, CTE, looking at the different careers that we offer through the Heights Campus, the Berry Center, seeing what we offer at the dual enrollment again, because there are so many opportunities out there, and getting in there and seeing what those opportunities are will make a difference. Very important thing, I'm going to reiterate again, monitoring use of technology. The older they get, the more savvy they become. And monitoring their technology is very important. Supporting their successes and help them learn from the struggles and explain accountability. You know, a lot of times our students, you know, they're going to make mistakes. We learn more from our mistakes than we do from our accomplishments. Take in situations where we offer our students, our children, an opportunity to talk through the situations, and that's why being actively involved in the school will make a difference. Very important to set aside time to discuss what happened at school that day. Too often, as our children get older, they attain jobs, they get a driver's license, they're not home as much, especially if they're involved in community service, after-school activities. Set aside time every day to have a conversation with them, and talk about the day, talk about their plans forward. And not finally, but I'm sure there's many more things, but continuously looking at and identifying how you can support them to achieve their goals. And it really, one positive thing is that a lot of parents will say they truly enjoy is when they do campus visits, when they talk to the children about university, and they go for a drive, and they go see some campuses, and they walk through those campuses, because it helps bring that. So overall, you know, you're looking at the K-12, K-14, pre-K-14 perspective in our district, we have the opportunities. And if you see, you know, a lot of it is about communication, continuously being actively involved in their interpersonal relationships with each other and their community.
Great tips, actually, they're great tips for adults as well. So yeah, I hope everybody is ready, set back to school September 5th. Trustee Petlicoff.
I just want to, because I remember back to those days, I don't have any students in school anymore, but it wasn't that long ago. And one of the things I'd like to reaffirm for all of our parents out there is, don't assume that your child is going to access all of those opportunities that we have available in the school district. And the parent needs to be proactive in going on the school websites and taking a look at what kind of scholarships are available, what kind of courses are available, what kind of opportunities are out there in each building that might need some pushing for their students' behalf to really take full advantage of. I know I had a high school student who, we knew she needed some extracurricular activity at high school in ninth grade and was going to go out for field hockey. I dropped her over at the school. She decided that she didn't see any of her friends standing there and wasn't going to get out of the car. I literally pushed her out of the car, shut the door, and drove off. It was the best four years of her extracurricular life. She enjoyed it so much, but at the time, she was terrified to take that step. So every parent needs to understand that while they think that that student is being exposed to all these opportunities, they're not necessarily ready to engage with it, be it looking up even the simplest opportunities of a scholarship to apply for when they're ready to go in that direction. The parent really needs to still continue to be proactive in finding out those opportunities for their students.
Great, thank you so much for those great ideas. Next.
All righty, strategic plan, Dr. Glenn Malako and Ms. Shannon Peterson.
So before we get started with the presentation here, I just want to say, first of all, I appreciate the leadership of the board for approving the plan last year and providing direction and oversight with the strategic plan. We're not going to go through the whole strategic plan today, we're going to hit a portion of it, and the hope would be that we will do this periodically to give updates, because it's, I got the document here, it's on the website, and I know Trustee Petlicoff and Trustee Mead, you sat on the committee, but I can tell you that the plan is alive and vibrant, and in the next presentation, you're going to see an example of that specifically. So I just wanted to preface it that way. I can also tell you, which the board is aware, that my goals, which I'm working on, the new revisions, are totally correlated with the strategic plan. I'll have a new version of my goals to the board soon, probably by early September, and then I would give a presentation at the next board meeting, hopefully to get approved by October. But again, it's correlated totally with the strategic plan, as the board has been aware the past several years. So I want to just highlight, you know, our mission here, and we tried to both with the mission and vision, things that we'll remember, you know, it's all about the students, and we tried not to get so complicated, and so I just wanted to highlight that, wanted to highlight our core values as well, which I know we're ordering for the boardroom the new poster, I know we have the previous versions on the back wall, and that again was something that the students had helped us to decide upon. And then I just wanted to mention, how is it alive? Here are some examples. Continual referral to the plan. So at my monthly general administrators meeting with all the principals, there's a total correlation with the strategic plan, it's referenced. We have breakout sessions at cabinet meetings, at professional development, at our school improvement, school improvement process is all over it, board meetings. Anytime we've presented here, we've also provided a correlation or a connection with the strategic plan. When we go to conferences, school visits, and then community outreach is also a part of it, promoting the plan, whether it be through blog or social media. So just to remind the board, we have the six focus areas, but really, you could kind of look at it as eight, because curriculum assessment, instruction, the most important, I believe, and the most in-depth is kind of one area. So today, we're really just going to look at curriculum and instruction, and then other data, we may give some examples of some other areas with some data, but I also wanted to mention that we do have the six areas that were agreed to, the partnerships, finance, human resources, communications, and then special programs.
You'll have access to a PowerPoint that actually goes over every area, but we would be here till tomorrow at 10:00 AM if we actually did that presentation. So you'll have, you'll have access to it.
So we'll continue to try to provide this information. We have, again, the six focus areas, 39 action points, I have the book in front of me, it's on our website, it's attached to my blog, it's on our district site. We have 120 standards of excellence, those are the measurements. We have many of them are smart, or most of them are smart, and what we can say, it's a three-year plan, but to this point, we've accomplished 44, 47% of the 100 standards. And again, that's a three-year plan, so we're going to continue to work on the other areas. So that's just to give, and we have some examples, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Peterson, who, part of her responsibility is the coordination and making sure that, working with me to keep the plan on the agenda. I know the board has also received both of my goal evaluation, and I know she shared the artifacts, where we put in artifacts into folders that you can look at examples, and I had that in my year-end evaluation last year.
So with the curriculum action points, go over updating our district curriculum, we call it DEC, that's where the teachers can go and access pacing guides and lessons and things like that. Updating resources to reflect 21st century learning, implement restorative practices in our anti-bullying initiative, and of course, creating professional learning communities at our schools, and following that process to improve student achievement. So some of the progress that we've had is our science curriculum committee has updated our pacing guides to match the new Michigan Science Standards. We are launching DEC 2.0, the teachers have worked on with the district committees to make it more user-friendly, really what the teachers wanted to be able to access, what they were looking for. The first one was good, but DEC 2.0 is better. All curriculum committees this summer spent time working on curriculum, and we will continue to upload lessons, and we are just working on a rubric so that when we do put lessons up there, there's a process to make sure that a lesson that we're going to share is actually a viable and good lesson. All schools participate in anti-bullying, that's part of your policy, of course, and we had eight additional schools trained in restorative practices, and we hired our restorative practice empowerment facilitators, and that has been implemented at several schools. We have a PLC, Professional Learning Communities Handbook. Sorry, we're notorious for shouting out letters.
Well, you'll get more information in the next presentation, so.
And building capacity to implement the professional learning communities process, because it really is a process, and just last week, we had many administrators give up three days of their summer, because they were still on vacation, two weeks ago, to go to Grand Rapids and work on that together. Instruction, implementation of research-based instructional practices, posting content and language objectives in every classroom, strengthen the implementation of our multi-tiered systems of support, and continue our implementation of my learning plan, where we really learn what students are interested in and have an individualized plan, so we can use their interests to help them learn. So each school has two improvement visits, school improvement visits every year, they have lots, lots of other visits, but they have two official school improvement visits. Obviously, he's everywhere, so, right? Each school publishes a professional development calendar, that's part of the school improvement process as well. All schools implemented content and language objectives, they are at different places, we're building capacity in the teachers, because that really is an art, but we do know from the research that focusing, having a clear focus for learning actually helps improve student achievement. Co-teaching in the secondary is in math and language arts, and we have piloted it in elementary, five elementary schools.
Can I mention, too, we'll at some point bring a co-teaching presentation before the board as well.
I knew Dr. Mead would not be able to sit through this without, I mean, this is one of his favorite topics, so Dr.
I'm going to give you some more numbers.
Go ahead, Dr. Mead.
I've got Dr. Mead all over this with some numbers coming up.
I think it's probably the most important thing that we do as a board, is to make sure that we have a strategic plan, but all these action points are as a result of goals that everybody has established, right? And then there is some person responsible for making sure those goals are accomplished or discover that the goals were not worthwhile.
Right.
So all these action points are now as a result of the plan, the goals, and these are the outcomes. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes. So I'm only giving you the progress of our standards of excellence, which is the outcomes right now for curriculum and instruction. So we said that all elementary schools would have a multi-tiered systems of support process in place, and they do. We've started a secondary 3D committee, so they're working on the multi-tiered systems of support process right now in secondary. It's a little bit of a bigger challenge, because as I said in the middle school back-to-school presentation, students have seven teachers, so getting them all in one place to really figure out how to help a student can be a challenge. Graduation rates have increased for the last five years, that is actually a standard of excellence on several different points, and I believe that's a 10, yeah, that is a 10% increase in five years, and we said that well surpassed the actual goal.
The, you know, this was from this morning, actually, or this afternoon, and Trustee Petlicoff, you were there to address the new teachers, over 100 teachers. We got that loaded in, and, you know, so again, that, this is a highlight of some other data, not related directly to the curriculum and instruction, although these are the people going to be running it when they get with the students. So we wanted to highlight some other things in the plan, even though we're really focusing on curriculum and instruction, but again, these are our new teachers that were here, they were very excited. I think they were quiet initially, but you know.
Very quiet, I was a little worried.
But Ms. Farage, you know, really did, is doing a great job leading that process, it was a very positive experience for them, and to go with that, if you look at, 55% of the new hires had an English as a second language endorsement, and so we continue, or, I'm sorry.
Or are committed to getting one.
Or are committed to getting one, yes. And so we've continued under the leadership of Ms. Rose Aldebaly, and the ELL department has really done some great work with promoting more certification in those areas and finding grants to help pay for tuition and other things, so it's been a real positive, and I think that's where Dearborn, you know, is a leader in the, not only in the state and the nation with how we've moved on that, and I'm actually going to be giving a presentation at the State Superintendent's Conference on this exact issue of how, with the English-language learning model and the growth that we've gone through in Dearborn, and so it's a real positive, and Ms. Aldebaly is helping me with all the information we need to present up there.
So one of our goals was to increase by 5% in three years, and in the last two, we've increased by eight.
Wonderful.
See, I told you I'd get you some numbers. So student enrollment, we wanted to increase that by 200, 870 last year. We wanted to do 40 positive press releases, we did 43. We wanted to increase our social media following, we have 6,100 district Facebook followers and 3,500 Twitter followers, and we're not talking about his.
Yeah.
Because those numbers would be higher.
I heavily increased last year, especially on Instagram.
We wanted to increase the Henry Ford Collegiate Academy size by 5%. We had 137 students signed up for this next cohort, which is over a 10% increase. Jane got that one, too.
If I can mention, too, Mr. Mustin and I are also presenting at that state conference on our social media model and the outreach, and I could even just comment and experience just the other day where there was information out there, and I don't, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, I don't dialogue in anything negative, but there was information out there. I think the public, when you respond and you can, and get involved in things, you can kind of turn that into a positive by just getting information out there. And I know we had people in the community that were tagging, and so I will try to respond when I can. Again, I don't get into any negative dialogue, and that's kind of our procedure we've done. We're promoting the district, and when it comes to customer service, I'll respond, you know, and I'll make sure that we, the proper team is out there, so I just wanted to mention that as well.
So some more numbers are, we had 24 additional classrooms created out of existing space, we're getting pretty creative there. Forty-three summer projects have been completed by operations this year. 2% increase in the number of teachers rated highly effective, understanding that we have more teachers, so to get the 5% that we want in three years, it's actually increasing the number of teachers that have to reach that, but after the first year, we have 2%. 100% of the schools have had two school improvement visits.
Can I mention, too, as we look at the strategic plan, that's an area that also is challenging, because we have a lot of new teachers in their first, first to seven years, and we looked at the data, and then we have a lot that are within five years of retirement. So if you can see, we have a lot, you know, so there's going to, at some point, be a need for even more hiring, and right now, I think, human resource is saying over 110. To this point in the year, we've never been at this level since I've been in the, well, I shouldn't say that, I think when I first got hired, 20 years ago, they were hiring at that level, but not in 20 years has it been that many.
The HR action points, a couple of them had to do with building capacity from within, so 100% of our assistant principals hired in the 15, 16 school year were actually interns and part of that program. 80% of the administrator hirings were internal applicants in the last year. Fifteen new administrators participated in leadership coaching, that was also an action point. 200 less absences, yay, when comparing 2015 to 16 to 2016, 17, and this is for teachers, and this is with more staff. So we've had less absences with more staff, so that's a big win.
Yeah.
And four early head start classrooms opened to serve infants to toddlers.
If I can add, too, I got to mention, I give HR credit, we just got some real positive emails going out and how they've been handling things with that big volume, and the fact that they just moved last week. So we had some staff that actually sent me some, sent me some emails commending the human resource department, so I appreciate their hard work under the leadership of Ms. Ali Bazey and the other, and the team, and you can see the number of volume that they're dealing with.
So what are our next steps? As you said, Dr. Mead, we want to tweak the student achievement numbers, not just to deal with grade level, meeting grade level, but also showing growth, so we're going to reconvene the committee for instruction to say, what's a reasonable number of growth that we want to meet for students? Review all focus areas and update action points. We have something on job shadowing that we had in partnerships for Henry Ford Early College, and they're not old enough. So that's kind of an action point, or standards of excellence that isn't reasonable, because they have to, we worked with the partnership with the city, but they have to be 18. By the time the students are 18, they're in college classes, so it didn't work out. And we'll continue to focus all our district work around the strategic plan and focus on what's best for kids.
So that was an example of a goal that we couldn't reach because of we had an external requirement.
Exactly, so we will be updating.
All right, super.
When do you expect to give another update to the board in terms of the strategic plan and where we stand on other goals?
Work with President Lane, and we'll see if we can fit it, and we could probably do it every, periodically, to continue, you know, making it. We could probably do it every periodically to continue, you know, making it reasonable because the large PowerPoint, if you would've saw, there's a lot of information, but I can, we're ready because now we've had a year under our belt. We're continuing, working on it. Ms. Peterson and the entire executive team and the entire staff have been working hard and have done a nice job. So we're happy to keep that on a regular basis, you know, with trying to break it into smaller segments, depending on what we need.
You know, to know what's going on and how we're meeting these goals, and if there's something that we can assist with or something that we're hung up on that we can't maybe start a dialogue as to, you know, how we can meet them. But I truly enjoyed today's presentation, and it was, you know, makes me very proud. And, you know, credit goes to everyone that's been working on this. I know it's a team effort, so.
Absolutely.
And numbers, and graduation numbers in the state are actually decreasing, and ours is increasing. If you remember at the college, one of the projections that they saw, we're gonna have a problem with enrollment because there's a decrease in graduation rates. But not at Dearborn Public Schools. So that was just at the last meeting.
And at some point, we're gonna have Dr. Patterson come before you like he did last year to look at our, which he came last month on NWA growth, but looking at M-Step and all the other data sets that we have. And you'll be getting a memo on a plan related to the school improvement process that our team of instructional leaders have been working on, on how we're gonna continue to move forward with increasing not only growth data but student achievement. And so the teams have been working hard on that so the board can expect to get that in the near future, and it is aligned with the strategic plan.
Dr. Mead.
I just, I have to keep going back to this point because when you say that you have an action point that has been completed, and you can see that there's been real progress, the people behind that are responsible to have that happen, and they have to work with a whole lot of other people, and all different kinds of programs in order for that to come. So we get the final statement, but there's so much, the final action completed, but there's so much that goes on behind to get there. So we could actually invite somebody who was in charge of that particular action goal to come and tell us what they went through. You are telling us generally, but there were real people behind each one of those that, so the whole district is involved, and that's right? Am I right?
Absolutely. The whole district's involved.
Yeah.
Actually, Dr. Mead, I think that's really important to bring it down to a microscopic level on a lot of issues. One thing that I was thinking to comment on, you kind of approached core curriculum, which has become a politically charged item. But core curriculum, for many years, people were saying, there should be a core of knowledge that every American student learns, and that's the purpose of the core curriculum. And that's what we're working toward. I know that the Policy Committee just met, and I see Dr. Grover there. So, I mean, we're trying to interconnect the theory of a core curriculum to what are students learning every day in American history or American government? And connecting those things takes a lot of, of time and effort by many minds, and, yeah, that costs money, and it's worth it in the end because the student product that we produce is so, so important to our democracy, to our society, so.
Well said.
So you will, so you will see tonight, one of the small groups that had to influence Professional Learning Communities and creating the handbook, and that was a standards of excellence, an action point in the standards of excellence. You're gonna see, you're gonna get a glimpse tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, and just to add to that, presentations we brought before you are connected to that, like School Improvement Next Month and Co-teaching and other things, so that, that'll give you breaking it down. And yes, Dr. Mead, we have specific names of people who are responsible that are overseeing.
Yeah, I think they should be, they should be announced. We should let people know that these people are the ones that are responsible for this. They should get some credit for their work because it's, without them providing the leadership, a lot of stuff just doesn't happen.
Absolutely.
And I think it's also important to note, when we say we've met the action point, we're gonna continue to.
I was gonna say, it doesn't mean it's done.
Continue to do it. It's not falling apart. It's worth, it's continued, but we've reached that goal, and we're gonna maintain or improve from that.
I love it. I love it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next up, continuous process improvement, Professional Learning Community. Dr. Glenn Maleko, Mr. Scott Casebolt, and Ms. Rose Aldubaly.
So here's one of those examples that Ms. Peterson was mentioning, and we specifically had this, so it's connected to the Professional Learning Community. I just want to give a little background before I turn it over to Ms. Aldubaly, and she's gonna kind of introduce the team. But I also want to, you know, thank Dr. Jensen because we implemented the continuous process improvement. I know he's here, and that is now a major part of our strategic plan. And so we appreciate his hard work last year to get us off and running, and the continual support and the partnership through that model. And then this, I believe, is one of, they're all important, all the CPI teams, but this one really hits the curriculum, the instruction, the assessment. I can say my, my background as a principal, I really took to the Professional Learning Community model many years ago. I read all the research by Rick Dufour, Doug Reeves and others in the field, Bob Ecker. I know as a principal, you took to the same, and we had partnered Ms. Aldubaly. You know, I really, I also just want to mention, we do have some money allocated that was approved by the board in the Milage to hopefully work to go to kind of a model we had at Etzel Four, which is recommended in this, in this document by the team, by Mr. Casebolt and the team, to increase some learning community time for teachers. So that's in the budget, and it's put in there, and we're looking to go out and survey staff. Also want to mention that even though this team occurred in the 15, 16 year, this group has stayed together and their work has continued. Every time we have general administrators meeting, they're providing training in small group sessions. In fact, our June session was actually a retreat focused solely around Professional Learning Communities. So this is where you're gonna see multiple people on the team, and I gotta tell you, they did an outstanding, you know, we were the sponsors, but they really did an outstanding job. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Aldubaly.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So for me, I tried to figure out where I fit in in this presentation. We're both sponsors. Glenn introduces it, Dr. Maleko introduces the CPI concept, and then we have our presenters who focus on Professional Learning Communities. So I figured I'll wedge myself in as a testimonial because when I was brought on, I was brought on as one of the cabinet members, but I went from a doubter to a presenter. And I went from doubter to presenter because the process worked, and it works for the reasons that we do look at our perceptual data, and we do turn it into hard data from our surveys and what our expected outcomes are. And we pull all of our, all of our stakeholders, and we bring them to the table, whether we're administrators, teachers, whatever our title is, we leave it at the door, and we start to look at what are some of the areas that we need to improve on? What part of the process is falling apart, and what can we do to improve that process? PLC is something that we've worked on for years. We worked on as administrators. As a new principal from Miller, I went to see Dr. Maleko, and we had our Professional Learning Community as administrators, but it was something that was self-motivated because we were both before trained. When you look at the, the change in administration, the change in staff, is that consistency still there with the integrity of our Professional Learning Community, knowing what a SMART goal is? And so that kind of was the evolution of developing our CPI team. So the brains behind the operation, the talent, the magic would be the team that put it together and really started to look at what our surveys are saying and how to help improve it and to bring it along and bring it to life district-wide. And so I'll introduce Scott to talk a little bit about how that worked as a team.
I have to make one comment, too, with Scott. You know, the work at Etzel with moving from the priority, the model, and you're gonna hear from that, but that had a lot to do with his leadership and the team with the learning community model. And then, as mentioned, you heard the dedication, we had multiple administrators and teachers that went to the conference in the summer to continue to enhance this model. So they've really done an outstanding job, and they have great examples, so.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. It, it's hard to believe that I would stand before you and say there was a positive out of the priority experience, but I would prefer to call it an opportunity. One of the most rewarding things that I've been a part of is working on the PLC community at Etzel, and then working on the CPI team here under the leadership of Rose and Dr. Maleko, and of course, Dr. Jensen. As they've told you in previous presentations, it's an extremely rigorous process, but I think the product you see tonight, and the passion and the hard work of the team behind me, you'll be very impressed when I heard Dr. Mead's comments. I'm like, man, we are gonna, he just teed it up for us tonight. So without further ado, I'm gonna introduce Ms. Anoin.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, as we just heard from Dr. Maleko and Ms.
What's your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Janine Anoin, and I am, this year I have a new position. I'll be a PSYOP Language and Literacy Trainer with the EL Department. Currently, I was an instructional coach. So our strategic plan alignment, as Dr. Maleko and Ms. Peterson just talked about, ties into our CPI handbook. So in the strategic plan, under curriculum, the Action Plan Four states that the district will not only create a PLC handbook, which we've already done so, but also it will be implemented at each school throughout the district, district-wide. Also, under assessment, Action Point One, Dearborn schools will create a system that provides important data for teaching and learning, for teachers to actually use the data. All stakeholders will be held, held accountable, will use that data to drive instruction. And Action Point Three also says that the district will look at the CPI pro, or process and make sure that the improvements in the district align with that progress. So our project statement is, we want to achieve implementation throughout the district, that we have common understanding, so all teachers, all individuals working with students have the same language, common understanding, we're all accountable for student learning, we're not only looking at the data, but we're using that data to drive our instruction. So we're saying, what can we do to help our students improve? And where do we need to help them improve? And what areas do we need to help with improvement? And the goal of this team, we've, we, there are a few team members that couldn't be here today, but I was really fortunate to work with such a wonderful team. But our goal as team members is to guide this implementation of the PLC process throughout the schools. And as Dr. Maleko suggested, or already let you know that for the principals' retreat, we have presented at different buildings. All of us are in different buildings, have different positions. We've worked within our own buildings and also provided professional development on the PLCs for different schools, and we will continue to do so. And we also serve as a resource for other individuals for the PLC process.
How many of you are on this group?
There are.
I see two more.
Two more individuals that were out of town.
One wasn't able to make it because she's representing the district with the WEADA assessment and for the, the assessment for ELs, and so we felt her being there was critical as far as the decision-making for what that assessment looks like. And then one of our other ones had family.
It's okay that they're not here. I just was trying to understand, how do you go to 35 buildings when you have eight people?
Well, that's, as Dr. Maleko suggested, because we can provide our professional, we go to the administrators' meetings, so when we provide that PD for administrators, they could then bring it back to their building. But they could also approach one of us to come to their buildings as well, where we could provide that professional development. So, good question.
And I think the booklet is the other aspect, is it's a great resource that is used, so the booklet that you would have a copy in your board package.
Yes, I didn't mention that yet, but you do have an electronic copy, so all administrators have the electronic copy of the handbook. And the goal of the handbook is really, it's user-friendly. It has a, a clear-cut plan for each student, or each school to follow. So it has a calendar, and administrators can follow the guidelines so that they can have PLCs within their own buildings, and so that we can have consistency in the district. And Lori is going to talk a little bit about our data collection.
Good evening. I'm Lori Littner. I'm a literacy coordinator at Dearborn High School and a part of this fantastic PLC team, I think, behind me. I'm gonna talk a little bit about a year and a half ago, when we started the CPI process. It was really integral to our work that we grounded our discussions and our action stops in data. So we came together in February of 2016 and adapting a survey from Rick Dufour's Learning by Doing. We used Google to survey 446 instructional staff across the district and additional 69 administrators. And this represented elementary, middle school, and high school staff. Gave us a really clear picture of where we were with PLC implementation and what steps we needed to take to move a little further. When we looked at the data, three of the five areas where we needed to progress a bit with our implementation of Professional Learning Communities were solvable by providing staff with protocols, by the, the seven or so of us providing the handbook, getting up, modeling, giving teachers some practice in what it looks like to take a look at student data, to set norms, to write goals. But the other two pieces needed a bit more support. We found that instructional staff reported only 10% of our instructional, that 446 teachers said that they met as Professional Learning Communities once a week. And considering the recommendations of Rick Dufour and his team, we felt we needed to support them in coming up with some creative ways to increase time. So that's part of our recommendations. We also noted that there needed to be an increase in expertise, that teachers, that even administrators, needed to know a bit more about what a real professional community meant and how to move forward and to support one another in that work. So that's been part of our job over the last year and a half. We created a document that outlined some of the strategic shifts that teams of teachers needed to make in order to become a true Professional Learning Community. So we needed to help them understand the importance and have the tools to move from discussing lesson plans and curriculum to talking about student results, about the learning that was actually happening with the students in front of them and not just what they're going to teach. We needed to help teachers prepare to use the data that was available and to know how to walk through protocols so that they could look at where students were struggling and what steps they could make as an interdependent team. So that last shift that our responsibility is to help administrators and staff make is to become more collaborative, to be truly open to supporting one another and understanding that we can't teach all students unless we work together as a team. And then Scott's gonna talk a bit more about our, or Matt, you're gonna talk a bit more about our process, so how we moved forward after that initial results.
Good evening.
Happy to be here, representing my team. I'm very proud of like the work they've done over the course of the last year and a half, two years almost. Sorry if I talk too fast. I feel like I'm still in a different time zone. I literally just flew in from overseas a few hours ago.
Thank you for coming.
Well, before I begin, I just want to share just my experience as a teacher coming into the district almost 10 years ago, when I was hired by Glenn Maleko, or Dr. Glenn Maleko, Mr. Maleko at the time. And just being, just to kind of show in comparison of what a true PLC is, is, just, I remember being at a charter school, and our PLCs looked like, it was more of team time and checking papers and talking, discussing field trips, inventing. So it was like, okay, you have an hour, go with your team and just, you know, do whatever. Coming into the district, I was handed a book, Whatever It Takes by the Dufours, and it truly looked at the, the Pyramids of Intervention and how students learn no matter what, with those interventions. And, and it's basically PLC, look at it as an organized, an organizational improvement. So I was very proud of that, and coming in and seeing how professional it is at that level, I was, I was in awe. It was like a model school from, from, you know, from day one, thanks to the leadership of Dr. Maleko at the time. So I want to thank you for that. I mean, I came in, and I've learned so much. I'm gonna talk more in depth of the process of what it looks like in a, in a true PLC, starting with our CPI timeline. If I can direct your attention to the CPI timeline on your screens? Covey states, begin with the end in mind. So with our project statement that Janine covered, to achieve effective implementation of PLCs, and as a result, increased student achievement. So that's, that's the ultimate result of a PLC. And as Lori stated, the data collection summary, PLC implementation survey results, and like what we do with our students, we need to assess and see where they're at and then move forward from there. And then we realized, after, after collecting the data and seeing where the buildings were at, we realized we needed to shift to a PLC focus. And that led to the creation of our Fishbone chart, which I'll be discussing in a bit. And that helped focus on what's important in effective PLC implementation. And then going, moving forward, moving right above, building a collaborative PLC timeline, which is a timeline of how PLC, of how a PLC will look and be implemented from August to June. Next, essential to every PLC was including a guide on creating norms, expectations, and setting SMART goals. And then I believe Scott's gonna talk about the recommendations for improvement. So finally, we were, we will always improve based on data collection and recommendations from our district, which we'll continuously look at. So it's just, that's why it's a continuous improvement. And at the end of the day, we want to sustain and strengthen our PLCs across the district in all buildings. And now if I can direct your attention to the Fishbone chart of effective PLC implementation, focusing on what's important. focusing on what's important. And I'm kind of, kind of, I'm going to summarize each of the categories. So starting with common understanding, it's ensuring that the PLC mission is clearly articulated to all stakeholders. This includes parents, all staff, students, and the community. Creating an environment, moving on to the next category, creating an environment about having policies, practices, and procedures in place that are aligned with our mission. And of course, resources, resources and support, ensuring that resources, time, and training are provided for PLCs. For example, we are expecting teachers to create and analyze data for formative assessments, but have they been trained in the process? And as Mary Lane stated earlier, President Mary Lane, teachers need training for effective PLC interventions. And then the accountability management piece, looking at, and of course, time, we all need time, looking at the logistics of effective PLC implementation, this would include electronic agendas and feedback forums. And for accountability and support, administrators give timely feedback, answer questions, or concerns a team may have, and provide resources to PLC leaders. And finding time during late start staff meetings, and I know some buildings have roving subs provided for their PLC teams. And this is what, I would say a true PLC would look like. So I want to direct your attention to the flow chart on this, on your screens. And this flow chart, like I said, is a good example of what typically happens in a collaborative PLC. It starts by creating PLC norms and expectations, and setting SMART goals. Looking at curriculum and data, the team then creates, develops power standards, so focusing on what, what's important. Teams then create common assessments to drive instruction. Teams also create formative assessments to ensure that students are understanding what is being taught. PLC teams then collaborate and collectively analyze student work, for example, looking at student writing samples together. And then finally, implementing the Pyramid of Intervention for students not meeting the standards, and also how to challenge students who do. And it all ties into the focus on learning. What do we want students to learn? How will we know if they have learned? What will we do if they do not learn? And finally, what will we do if they already know it? So how are we going to challenge our students? And then right next to it would be the PLC timeline. And I'm not going to go in-depth, but that's essentially what it looks like, I mean, as a teacher, as a PLC leader, or as an administrator, something I'd look at and probably keep close, close to hand is, what will I do in the beginning? What will I do, you know, the first two months? What will I do throughout the year? You know, initially, probably perhaps started with team-building activities, icebreakers to kind of build staff morale. And then exactly what I explained, looking at, you know, looking at data, analyzing data, revising instruction as needed, revising our strategies as needed, and moving forward. So that's, and I'm going to, any questions? I'm sorry if I'm talking too fast.
No, we can hear faster than you can speak, probably, but I would like to just point out on there, I think a lot of people don't realize, I mean, a lot of people are under the impression that education stops during the summer, and that is not the case for students, and it's not the case for administrators or teachers either. So on here, this is pretty hard for people to read, but there is a section in here that talks about what you're doing in August. And I know, knowing many educators, that a lot of people educate themselves on best practices. I just was overhearing a couple of teachers during the last few weeks talking about what they're going to be doing in the fall, challenges that they had. So I think it's really important for the public to know that, to know what kind of strong professionals we have in our educators, and that goes from the bottom to the top. I really don't think that there's been enough public discourse honoring educators for the work that they do. None of us wants to go to an inferior doctor or any other professional, and none of us really want our children taught by a teacher who's not well-prepared and professionally-trained. So Dr. Mead is right, you don't get enough thanks for the public, especially lately. Seems like teachers are the scourge of so many problems, but, but you do a lot.
They're the scapegoats, is what they are.
Yeah, they're really being scapegoated, and we, I think almost all of us are here because we understand that what you do is often not thanked enough. And here's a chart talking about what you all are doing in August. Ms. Peterson was just talking about three people that gave up three days of vacation to go and be trained. So that kind of thing does not get enough thanks, so I would like to say, it's on there, and we should point it out.
And I hope Mrs. DeVos will hear about your charter experience versus your public school experience, and the professionalism you found within the public school system. I quite frankly suspect that most charter schools don't put forth the amount of effort that a public school system does in making sure that their teachers are professionals, and that they are equipped with the fullest tools to ensure the best education possible for every student that walks through those doors. And I would really hope that if she were to come here, that we would stress once again that you're just not going to get this in, in that situation, that we support this year round.
I'm almost thankful for my charter school experience, because I'm so much more thankful.
You have something to compare.
Exactly, and I'm so much more thankful and appreciative of the little things. I mean, the support, the support systems that we have in place, I mean, you can't get that anywhere, so.
Well.
And I kind of wish everyone would have that experience, just to see in comparison the differences.
We have a lot of resources. There are many great, great educators in charters and in private schools.
Certainly, I agree.
But, but we have a big community here, and you're a professional community. The other thing that I don't think anybody says, but I'd like to say this, and I get on my soapbox way too much, but charters many times are run by profit-making corporations. Public schools are for the public good and for no other reason. That's what, that's what public schools are, so. Trustee Hamud, I think you were.
One thing I like about this is the preemptive approach, and what will we do if? So if, if they don't know it. And what I like about this is, one, it shows the team effort that all of you have put in, and preemptively trying to answer questions of, of how will we go about this if we do face some obstacles? So I like that a lot on this chart.
And I also want you to focus on the very last part of the flow chart, where it says, implement pyramid, pyramids of interventions for students not meeting standards. What happens if they don't meet, it's kind of like going back to square one, there's a way, I mean, it goes back up to the planning stages. So going back to the drawing board, okay, what do we need to do to move forward, to move these kids forward, to challenge the students?
Yeah.
All right, I know it's supposed to be a 12-minute presentation.
Sorry about that. Is that totally our fault?
Not at all.
Because we all like the topic, Dr. Mead.
So Scott, will you just, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were you going to say something?
No, go ahead.
How does this fit in now with the strategic plan?
Well.
What, how, how does the?
I think it fits in very well to, as we said, student achievement, assessment, that's all a part of the process. We've shared just a few of the Fishbone and the timeline piece in there. That's the roadmap for the year, and like it was stated earlier, that's a continuous process that starts all over, and for us, day one. It already has, as a matter of fact, looking for students who are at risk and identifying ways and interventions and such. And then also the enrichment piece, if you look in there as well. The document that was created, the handbook, is, is a living document, I think we like to call it amongst the team. It's something that all the buildings will contribute to as we each move forward. This is DeForre's stuff here. This is, this is stuff that we recommend as a resource moving forward, but the buildings will each individualize this based on their leadership, based on their teams, and so forth. I just wanted to know, let you know, actually, there were about 40 or 50 administrators and teachers from Dearborn Public Schools up in Grand Rapids for that, the three-day conference. So it was a powerful experience.
I see the picture coming up.
Saw the DeVos name in Grand Rapids ironically a lot, but I didn't see Betsy. I wish she could have seen or attended the conference, because I think she would be very moved. Our, our team specifically for Etzel, and talking to the other teams that were there, are already fired up, and have already spent additional days developing what they're going to do moving forward this year linked to professional learning communities.
Let me see if I got this. The continuous quality improvement, but it's called, leads to professional learning communities. The process leads to a professional learning community. The purpose of the professional learning community is to identify growth of students through assessment, to try to get some idea of how each child is progressing.
The professional learning community does that. So they work together in teams, it could be by subject level, it could be by grade level, and they come together and they look at data for each individual student, let's say by standard. And they determine what standards the students did well on, and which ones they need to reteach and possibly retest on. And if you or I were in the English department together, Language Arts together, your class did outstanding, my students didn't do as well with this standard. So you and I talk about, well, how did you teach that, Dr. Mead? Oh, okay, well, I'm going to give that a shot. I'm going to go in tomorrow, and I'm going to teach, reteach that standard to my students, and then reassess them to show, have them show that they can master that standard.
So all faculty across the whole school system are aware of this? They can take advantage of this?
Absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely, and we want them to add, as they move forward in their PLC journey, we want them to add to that document and have it grow with no, no end in mind.
It's really good stuff.
It, it is, and it's not rocket science, I'll tell you. I think if you look at the professional learning community materials, there's nothing in there that's hard. What, what is hard is sometimes people coming together and working as teams, and stepping out of the anonymity and that piece, and that's the real challenge for us as leaders that we face. But once you, you come together and you conquer that, and you see the purpose, it really is right there. Those three documents are huge. If a school follows the Fishbone and the timeline that we have in there, and that continuous process, I don't know how you go wrong.
So the teachers in the, in a particular school building know how their students are progressing by data. So the teacher who is having difficulty moving the students, or not, not saying that way, saying, I don't know how to deal with this student who needs to grow further, they can interact then with all the other teachers.
They have support.
And, yeah, and they get some ideas.
They have support.
It used to be that every teacher's on their own tub.
That's right.
In their classroom.
You were embarrassed maybe about the results, right? You'd be afraid to share that, but in this type of a setting, you know, sometimes I do well, sometimes you do well, but together, you know, our kids are going to do well moving forward, and we're both going to grow from that experience. Now, I have to stress, it's a rigorous process to establish true PLCs foundationally. We had that advantage at Etzel Ford with that extra hour, and I think that's why we're very excited about the recommendations that we made, specifically the PLC pilot at each level. I think that will be extremely powerful for any school that gets that opportunity to have that time and use it, because you're talking about pacing guides, backward design, formative assessment, common assessments, and establishing all that. If you build it that way, you get to the point where you can look at data and have those powerful conversations like we just talked about.
All right, outstanding.
We're excited about it.
Yeah, it is a cultural change.
It is.
Totally a cultural change for what teachers were expected to do before.
It is, yeah, because in the past, and they talk about it at the conference, you know, it was safe to be in your classroom alone, I'm going to do my thing. Now, it's out there, but we're working in teams, and most importantly, you have that support. So that's within a school. The district has our support and commitment as a team moving forward, and, you know, it's, it's all about student achievement at the end of the day.
But it also can lead to some people leaving. Some teachers will leave because it's such a severe cultural change.
It's not comfortable.
It's kind of like when you get, like my age.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to learn computers, you know?
I'm listening, yeah, I'm listening.
And eventually say, I got to get out of this place. I can't even understand how to do that. So it's a, it's a huge cultural change, but it's the right direction, don't you think?
Absolutely, and there's support for everyone, and, and we're excited about the possibilities.
Well, right now, we have 50% of the professionals leaving teacher, teaching after, what, five years, something? So we really need to make sure that teaching is a profession that people value, that value is expressed and paid for. It's always about the time and the money, so.
Everything's tied in tonight, from the opening title comments and everything else, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Is that it tonight?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.